Here it is.
I got it.
Oh, that's yours. Warriors gave you that?
Well, now you're distracting me.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to open this special joint meeting of the Johnson County Board of Commissioners and County Council on the Commissioner's side on this May 6, 2024 at 11 o'clock a.m.
Good morning, everyone. I also would like to open a special joint meeting between the Board of Commissioners and Johnson County Council on the side of the council.
Do we need real call?
Yes.
Sure.
Here.
John Dittmers?
Here.
John Mallers?
Here.
Present.
Long Beer?
Present.
Long West?
Present.
Jonathan T. Myers?
Here.
John Myers?
Present.
Long Beer?
Present.
Is Kevin online by chance?
I appreciate it. When he didn't respond, I figured he was probably pretty sick. Commissioner Walz could not make it here today. He's under the weather, obviously, somewhere. We don't know where yet. Hi, Betsy.
Hi.
You want to talk to us?
Sure. Betsy Swearingen, Director of the Health Department. First of all, thank you so much, everyone, for being here today. Impressive, a little nerve-wracking, but nonetheless, thanks for all coming together to chat with us about the Governor's Public Health Funds. I have some friends with me today. Jeff Qualls, our health officer, Lisa Brown, my director of nursing, and J.C. Miller, our health educator. So, we're just here today. I'm going to spare you a PowerPoint or something super duper fancy. I'd rather just talk, hear what you would like, hear what your concerns are, hear what your thoughts are. I gave each of you a handout that says Health First Indiana Funds, and it has it kind of broken down into a preliminary budget. These numbers by no means are hard numbers. They're just kind of an idea of how to take the money and split it into kind of a wish list or a way that we would like to see them, we'd like to see the funds spent if we are able to take them. I know that there's some concern that in taking the funds, we give up our autonomy as a county and we give up our, I guess, authority or our chances to decide what we do, but that's truly not the case in this. And in fact, I did speak with Pam Pontonis the other day regarding these preliminary numbers. I did not submit them to her or anything, but just had a few questions. She's the deputy health commissioner, by the way. And I did speak with her about, you know, what happens if we set these numbers aside and then we decide, yeah, we don't want to do that anymore, or we want to do this. And she's like, we don't look at the numbers based on how we think you should spend them. They're based on whether or not they meet the regulatory statute, and as long as they fit into that category, we can choose to do whatever we want to do with the funds, as long as they hit the 40-60 threshold. So, if we go through, if we, would we like to go through the whole packet, one area by each area, or kind of tell you who we plan on partnering with in those divisions?
I don't, I'm assuming everybody's went through it on their own. I would just ask if there's any individual questions that they might have in regard to what you presented us with, but beyond that, I mean, it's comprehensive, I will say that. Very well done. And I'm assuming that we meet the 60-40 requirements in this proposal, so we don't have to worry about that aspect of it. And in your comments in regard to being able to move the services within the area or move the funding, it was exactly one of the reasons why we considered opting in on this next to go around, because you do have that flexibility to move dollars and services within the total package, so we're not committing ourselves to the exact proposal here. So, I like that.
Yeah, there are less regulations under these funds than there are under the preparedness funds, the base and the CRI grant that we take right now, less than the supplemental immunization grant, as long as they hit that 60-40. And I would say we're more in the ballpark of about 80-20, wouldn't you say? I think that's about right. 80% of the preventative services that they were looking for.
I did, the one thing, and I mentioned this to Commissioner Baird this morning, that I had asked Jim with the CIT board or group to submit something, maybe some possible things that they might need in conjunction with the service they're providing, and I thought maybe we could incorporate that in here.
I, thank you. It's Monday, and I had just had that discussion last week. I did not change anything on this document that I gave you because, actually, I had already given it to you, so I figured we would chat about it today. Yes, we very much so have funds that we could share with the CIT program and would have absolutely no problem with that. Also, under that $600,000 that we set aside for kind of like a grant application portion, there's funds underneath there. That's the area that I'm the most excited about, is it will be, it'll be very interesting, hopefully, very interesting to see who comes to us to ask us for things that they think that they need in the county. People who are out there every day, who are doing things, who need the funding and can't find the funding and that will better serve our citizens.
And I assume, Betsy, we can move more funds into that section?
And we are actually at the very back of this. I wasn't sure what to do with the remaining 146, 17, 50, and those are rough numbers because we don't exactly have tax, taxes in retirement and everything completely 100% factored into that. That money is flexible, and the legacy funds, that currently is the Tobacco Trust and the Health Maintenance Funds of this year of 2024, we haven't touched them this year. We actually do not have those funds budgeted yet for the year. We have a budget and we submitted it, but I don't know that we'll come close to touching that, so we have that additional. I think it's like roughly about $152,000, too, that could be supplemented into that as well. I did not budget that money in this budget, but it will all become one fund under HFI, so it will no longer be called the Legacy, we'll be called this instead.
What is HFI?
Health First Indiana.
Okay, and I just have one question. Surrounding County aid, 300,000, what is that?
I think there was some talk that maybe Brown County and some of the smaller health departments could use some more funding, that they don't get as much funding based on their population size, and so therefore, if we had extra funds or we wanted to partner with them on something that they wanted to do that maybe we would have oversight on, or not oversight really, because we're not going to regulate them in any way, but maybe they wanted to partner with us and we fund it instead of them taking a portion of their HFI funds and funding it, but we can do it as a joint venture, so that would be aid to help those. And maybe not so much, you know, the District 5 counties that we work with right now, in all essence, D5 is a very wealthy district, and our counties do really well. So, maybe it's partnering with Brown or it's partnering with Bartholomew or another county that's near us, that's not part of our district.
And would that be area-based, because there are a lot of shared areas that...
Could be.
When you drive in, you don't see that imaginary line, you know, one county or the other?
Well, we have a municipality in our county that sits in three counties, so there's a perfect example of being able to help the Bartholomew-Shelby County residents of Edinburgh that aren't in our county. And we don't ever partner, I don't want to say ever, we rarely partner with Bartholomew County because they're not a D5 county and we get, you just get into your role of always staying in your district and always partnering with them, so this would be a chance to broaden those boundaries.
So, I'd also be interested, when you look at mental health, do you look at it as preventative care or?
Oh, absolutely. I believe that it is. And I know that there were questions about the playground or the living room, I'm sorry, playground, that's a digital sandbox thing, sorry, about the living room at the funds to hopefully be allocated to the new mental health facility. And that living room is a wish list item kind of for the health department. It's something that we would like to see provided there, or we would, we think would benefit. And that's just, it sounds like a physical thing, but it's more of a, I don't know, I can't really think of the right word that I'm trying to say. It's more of a, just an option for people who are having a bad day that don't want to go through the CIT program, who don't want to become part of the system, but can go in and speak with somebody and people know they care.
Understood. I'd like you to also consider, you know, we're gearing up and starting to lay tracks for community corrections. There might be a possibility for this living room space to...
There could be one at each. I mean, it could look, it could look like so many different things, I think. I think it's just a chance to see what we can do. I think there's a lot to do.
Just a thought, and I know that this is very flexible, but you've done a really good job of designating what you feel like right now, or, I agree with every one of them.
Hey, this is a team effort. I didn't do this myself, so without these guys. And Tracy Smith at WIC, amazing, she has a portion in this, too. Other community groups, upstream, just everybody, our community paramedicine program and the partners that work with that, we just, we have, we have big plans and great ideas. A little bit of funding would help.
Well, this is a perfect example of what you were saying with the, working with these other communities and counties, is like the WIC program is, you know, we're working with other counties now to improve that system and to make it better.
Exactly.
And to help them out. That's what we need to do.
Right. Now, we have Shelby, and now we're looking at a second location in Johnson County because the current wait time at the Marion County WIC office, the Southern office, they can't see anybody until July.
Right.
And how does a brand-new mother get any help and have to wait till July at that point? The baby's sitting up.
I think the VASIA program is also, Help for the Elderly is stretched out into other counties and Johnson County.
And we hope, we would hope to see DCS, we would hope to see APS come to us and say, hey, I have this great idea. Let's partner, let's do this, and that's what we're hoping to do. We've always tried at the Health Department to share. I think we've been blessed. I think it was kind of my goal when I came here and these opportunities, these grant funding started coming, I'm like, well, why wouldn't we apply for that? You know, if we're not going to take it, who else is? And we've developed some really great programs through that, and I would hope that we could just keep doing that.
What is your expectation for administration? How are you going to administer? Who's going to make what decisions for what within or moving around?
Well, that's a good question, and we are thinking of taking some of the funds that are in the base and CRI right now and putting them towards a partial grant manager. And then although I did tell Brian that I would not ask for a position in this, that I have enough people, I am asking for one position to help manage this along with the management of the other grants that we have.
Because you'd have to do a lot of reporting to the state, right?
There's reporting, but more so on this grant, on this $600,000. We're going to have applications, we're going to have, we need a promotion of that, we need, you know, advertisement to go out and do that, and this person could be that person that helps.
And that's what I'm hearing within the other counties, in the leadership of the other counties, is that they're having a lot of, having to add staff to take care of certain things that run within that. It's budgetary, it's paid for through that, but I kind of knew when we said we weren't going to add, we were, because I knew what every other county was doing at that time.
Right, right.
It's not unfeasible. It's, the process needs to be done the proper way.
Well, I like to brag on who I have, and I think we're great enough that we can get it done, but adding some more would only make it better.
Are you going to lose any of your other grants? Because I see you're transferring one, the school liaison into this. So, are you losing that grant that it's in now?
No, we're not, we're not losing that grant. We still have those funds, but that grant is done. So, we've got some funds left over from that, but the sustainability is not there. The state did that on purpose. They wanted you, when you took the HFI funds, to move that school liaison position into this, into this funding stream. So, that's why we're moving her into it.
We don't know how long this grant's going to last.
We don't.
That's the strings attached that I keep talking about.
Yeah.
Nobody seems to know this, John.
But I believe that preparedness was supposed to last five years. We're on year 20 right now. We started, or we will start year 20 on July the 1st. I think we have to trust that the Health Maintenance and the Tobacco Trust funds, they're there, they're always going to be there, so they've taken those funds and they've morphed them into this. I think by statute, there's, there has to be a funding stream, there has to be something. Might it look different? Might it be different numbers as time goes on? Probably, is it going to be based on what counties are doing what? And maybe, maybe that will dictate what kind of money that you get. I don't know what that looks like, but sometimes you just have to jump in and see how cold the water is.
I just think it's, the administration will know a little bit more after the election on how things are going to go in '25, so I think it depends on the legislative.
I think where we are, in a good position is that we're not a health department that needs these funds to do what we're already doing. These funds would just be to build and to grow and to do other projects outside what we're already doing. So, then I would hope if they're working at that point, we could find, in the worst-case scenario, ways to sustain those.
And that was going to be my point, was don't build these funds into your base of what you're actually doing. Have them be extra, that if it continues, hey, great.
Exactly.
But if it doesn't, then you have provided additional services, and then it all has to be spent right away. It can last more than just one year for these funds, for whatever program or project you have.
Well, that's like moving Shannon Lacy, the school liaison position, into this. We currently have, you know, school liaison funds, but if I can put those aside and I can wait until possibly we need them down the road or someone else needs a portion of them for something, then this gives us greater sustainability.
We're putting two positions in here. If we approve this...
Basically.
I guess technically, yes, I guess.
It'd be two positions if you're looking for a mental one.
Are they paid from these funds, or are they, are they going to be paid out? Where are those?
The one, the one position the grants management would be paid for out of this fund, the school liaison will then move into this fund as well, but I do have funds that were these monies to go away. I can sustain those two positions.
Indefinitely, or for how long?
That, hmm, probably at least five years.
Okay.
Okay, at least five years.
Well, and the other thing we need to consider is that the position you're adding would go away if the grants went away anyway, so that's not a position you're promising somebody for the rest of their career.
No, I'm not, but I think having both groups here, you also see the way our county is growing, and if you look at the Health Department as a whole and to what positions we've added out of the county budget, we don't ask for a position every year. We hold tight and wait. We are, our one, I think the last fund or the last position that we just moved into, the 1159 fund, we maintained out of a grant for five years. And then finally came and said, hey, we are using her on a daily basis to do county business every day. Can we please move her into the 1159 fund? That really didn't bulk up our budget too much. It didn't, there wasn't a great impact, so we're very careful about positions that we ask for.
That was a question, I've got a couple of questions. I've reviewed the recommendations of the 60-40. You guys have done a tremendous job on such a short notice preparing this. And I also realize it's not set in stone. Moving forward, who will make the final decisions on the budget? Is this something you will have a board, a committee? Is it our normal council? You know, how will that work?
Yeah, I would hope that we would make a, we would come up with a budget somewhat based on this unless there's unhappiness with this. And then, of course, I welcome all your input. That's why we made sure that you got a copy of it. That's why I reached out a few weeks ago and said, hey, if you have a wish list, let me know what you're thinking. And then, yes, it will be, it will come in with the Commissioner's blessing of taking the funds, then we would make the budget and we would come to you. And just like all of our other grants, you approve those and how we spend those monies, you would do the same with these.
I'd like to know, how do these funds come to us and how often? Are they by a year?
No, we get a one-money drop in January. One drop.
And then, do we know what that amount will be yet?
It should be somewhere in that 3.1.
3.4, I think, depending on the, which figures you look at.
It depends on who all takes, I mean, we really only are looking at a handful of counties that didn't take them, so it would be, if everyone does, then it'll be that amount. It could be possibly a little bit more if not everybody takes them.
And then the first one will be January 1, 2025?
Yes. And it is a one-time drop.
I've got that same administration question, I'm asking a little different way. For example, trauma and injury prevention has 1.145 in it, but if you just, who will decide that, let's say that 145,000, that should go into tobacco and vaping, how, who will be the adminis, the grant person administers the paperwork? What I'm talking about is who will make the decisions about spending within these stated categories?
I will use my subject matter experts that are on my staff to decide where, with their partners, who, where we think the funding should go. And everything that we do and every bit that we appropriate will be a decision made by you guys.
Well, that's the total number, but I'm talking about the breakout number.
Well, the breakout number, I'll have to still come to you with a line-by-line appropriation, so you'll see how those funds are being spent.
So, I'm hearing you say you and your staff will make those decisions.
We will make those decisions.
And then you will bring those decisions to the council and say, this is why those decisions were made.
Absolutely.
And then we have control of...
Yep, you'll have oversight on it. Absolutely.
Actually, she'll bring that to the Commissioners first, and we'll work with her on the programming and then...
So, that's, yeah.
And I brought this forward at the public roundtable, that the Commissioners are the ultimate responsibility to these funds. We're accountable to these funds, and if we don't work together cohesively, I'll be the first one to opt out of this thing in a heartbeat, and I'll push it hard. We need to make sure that these funds are used properly and under the guise of what is needed by the Health Department, but also since we're the ones opting into this and the ones that the public's going to be holding accountable, we need to be cohesively involved in that process.
Absolutely. When I became the Director after taking over for John, I made a conscious decision that I can't get anything done, or nor do I want to get anything done without working with you all to only better the programs that we offer to our citizens.
We appreciate that. I appreciate that. Brian, the question, the bigger, that's the bigger, but I'm saying, if something moves within these categories, who is it going through? It would go, they would bring it to the Commissioners for approval to move to the council, just like anything else that we actually do. Same process. Yes.
If there's a grant right now that we're looking into that we think we might want to take, the very first people I come to are the Commissioners, say, hey, we would like to take this, these are the reasons why. Is it okay if we apply? I believe that we will do the exact same thing, as we want to partner with so-and-so, we're planning to do this, we would like your blessing.
And we've always worked well together, don't we?
Always.
I don't think that's an issue for us.
I don't believe it is either.
The public needs to understand that we are engaged and involved in it, so that they understand that since they're holding us accountable, we want to be, if we're going to be held accountable, we want some part in it.
I think on a daily basis. I don't go a...
You do well.
Single week that I don't speak with one of our Commissioners on policymaking.
We have a very good relationship, and it's very cohesive, and it's been that way since I've been here anyway. It's a lot of programs in 2025, so will you be working on it before 2025?
Some of them are already in place, so it's just a matter of MOUs and partnerships. Yeah, there's a lot to do here. So, and you know what? In the first, I would ask for, if we do decide to take the funds, ask for just a year to get our, to get our feet wet and, you know, to get up and running. And I think everything's, it's going to be a learning curve. In the first year, we'll tell a lot about how quickly we can do things and what we need to change and what we need to work on more.
But you could be doing some of that this year?
Yes, absolutely.
Without the grant manager?
Oh, absolutely. Sure. That's no problem.
My other question earlier was, do you foresee, by receiving this money, it allowing any relief on your normal budget process?
I knew that question.
Possibly, possibly. I have not looked at that, but that 140,000, that is our total operating budget for 1159. That's what we spent last year in the 1159 budget, and then only salaries would be left in there. So, yeah, there's some, I think there's some...
I think that would make it very appealing to the taxpayers in general.
Sure.
If you're getting that money, then to take a little bit off of them because of that, and then they would feel like they've got a hand in it as well, but...
We'll find somewhere else to spend it, I'm sure. Well, I think though, what needs to be considered, and that's a great question, President, but I think what we need to understand is if this process goes away, which we should know hopefully through the summer, what we call the summer session, when we're working with legislators to try to figure out where things are going for '25 and '26, we'll have some of those answers, I think, by the end of this summer. But the other side is, too, is if you want to be able to maintain the sustainability of the people that you're moving into this, we need to not hit real hard on that budget, because then we're not going to be able to sustain those people if something would happen to this budget. So, I think we're probably a couple of years down the road from this where we can really see what we can do as far as cuts and things like that.
I agree. I agree.
I mean, just, that's what I'm hearing from a lot of different counties and how they're looking at it, is not to kill it.
Trying to keep that 1159 status quo, and then if, if we don't spend it, it reverts back.
Right, that's my thought. Exactly.
We try very hard. Almost every year, I think you'll look back and see that we do not zero out that budget every year.
And this new budgeting software system that we're getting, that will be at eye level. We'll be able to see what you've spent, what you've spent the last five years, what you're spending this year, what's going back, what's projected, so that'll be a big help.
I think you'll be pretty proud of us when you see that. I think we've done our best, so.
So, is there a 2026 expectation of continuation? Not at this point. I think you'll see a lot of that during what we call the summer conferences with the legislature, which the ICC will be very involved in, and that will be one of our main priorities, is the SB4 going forward. But there's promise of, yes, there's going to be something, but, you know, it's always with government, there's not the promise of what it is, how much it's going to be, how it's going to be maintained and things like that. But we, I think you're going to see some positive moves on that through summer conference and sessions with the legislators' movement into the budget year for '25. I think you're going to see some positive... There wasn't a formula for future years that had been talked about. Two-year budget process.
Right. And if I speak incorrectly on this, please correct me, but it's how the state runs their budgeting process. So, the State Department of Health, every two years, has to go to the legislature and ask for their budget to be funded. So, this is in line with that, that every two years, this will go back and then these budgets will ask to be funded. Is that, that's kind of the layman's...
And you have the same, you have the same process through most of the Department of General and the Department of Homeland Security operates that way, too. They operate on a two-year budget, and I'll be real honest with you, the IDHS this year, it's going to be cut. That budget, we're already seeing that in the grant forms that we're getting ready to process through the SAC, so there's probably going to be some cuts. So there's probably going to be some cuts. You just can't maintain something of that magnitude without being looked at. There's probably a lot of counties that won't use all this money as it goes forward, especially with some of the counties that got the money that they did, that don't need it as much as some other counties. So I think they'll look at all that, and I think that, you know, as local government will be pushing for that to make sure that we look at how those are being dispersed and all that. And we'll, fortunately, Johnson County will be involved in that process with meeting with the legislators. So I think we've got a good place, we're in a good place right now for this kind of stuff, so I think we're, we're moving forward in the right way.
And it is, it's a lot of money. It really truly is, and I think that they probably will go back and reevaluate those amounts and, and maybe so. I think it does, it takes a lot more money to get things off the ground too, so it may be a sustainability thing.
And the Commissioner West made a good point on that during the roundtable discussion is how the funds were appropriated in this bill. I don't think they, they really looked at it as, as hard as they should have, maybe in the way they processed that. And I think that'll probably change a little bit. There's a lot of pushback going on about, you know, the more elite counties getting more than the counties that really needed it. So I think that's all going to be in the process. Johnson County would be one of those that we, I think that we do real well in Johnson County. So I think we'll probably be one of those that'll look at too on the distribution, that our amounts will probably be cut some, I would think.
I think too on those, that elite status, to borrow it like that word. That's also our job then, as an elite county, to turn around and help those counties that can't.
Absolutely.
Or can't do it as well as we do it. So then this would just help us better be able to do that.
And if they see that, maybe they'll consider that in part of that process instead of just the size or per capita.
I think we always too have to be mindful of who we butt up next to. And we take a bunch of their people and we help their people, meaning Marion County. So therefore, I think we always have to be looking to what we can do. Because when you're standing on county line, sometimes they don't know if they're in Greenwood or if they're in Indianapolis. The Hooters thinks that they're Greenwood, they're not, they're Indianapolis, but they still say the Hooters of Greenwood, so I'm just saying. So I think we need to keep that in mind, that that line, there is no such thing, and those, all of those people need served.
Such a great example.
I can't help myself. It drives me crazy when I see that, I don't know why, it bothers me so bad. All, all of those places, the Long County line, I want to be like Indianapolis, Indianapolis, you're not Greenwood, yeah.
The greatest example of that was back on Greenwood Center in Arthur's Town, 11 open, and Greenwood Mayor Serena was the one that christened it, not the mayor.
North of Stop 11, amazing.
North of Stop 11.
Amazing, that is well into Marion County, so, yeah, definitely.
This whole process reminds me of the ARPA funding, where, you know, it's coming down, a lot of that was federal government filtering through the state, but this is generated more by the state.
It is, and that's refreshing.
Yeah, and I think that's why they have opened the door so much on what the funds are used for. I think that a lot of the flaws of the ARPA system were, they were pigeonholed. So I like the flexibility that you're giving here.
I do think that, that, that the legislature gave us, gave the people who do this on a daily basis, a chance to do their job and do what they're good at.
I agree.
Out of curiosity, this was initially introduced.
I went to your mic over there.
I don't know, my good. Actually, let me, disrupted my.
Sorry, I'm nowhere near you.
You couldn't, you're sitting right next to me. This was originally introduced, the commissioners, I think, opted out. And I'm curious as to what the catalyst was to the decision to revisit, to get to this point. Because I think, I mean, this is, I'm all for this, but I wondered originally what the issue was. I know I read in the paper, but I'm not privy to the rationale of the original decision.
We opted out initially for several reasons. One, we were concerned about the 60% mandated use and how that was going to affect the health department's ability to do what they need to be doing in relation to these funds. We opted out because of the disparity in the funding allocations. That was a big concern of mine. When you take the five least healthy counties in the state and, and average, they get about $400,000. They're the worst when it comes to health. And yet the top five healthiest counties in the state averaged about 3.4 million they were getting. Hamilton County, number one in both factors, health factors, gets over $9 million. And Crawford County, a very poor and unhealthy county, gets less than $400,000. I had a real problem with that, and I expressed that openly and was hopeful that the state would consider us not opting in and using those funds that would have been allocated to Johnson County to distribute them to these smaller, less healthy counties. So that was the two major concerns that we had. We also were concerned about sustainability, you know, going forward, if we initiate or instituted a lot of programming and then two years out, we just got to stop it all, and we were concerned about that. And we didn't get any response from the state at that time on sustainability. What made us change our mind is Dr. Weaver and communications I had with her and her department. And that's the reason we had the roundtable where they came down to the panel discussion in which we openly in a public meeting were able to hear their thoughts and their, what they were going to make available to us and for them likewise and the public to hear our concerns in opting in or opting out on the second go around. And during that open discussion, that panel discussion, that's where we became aware of the flexibility in being able to use these funds, especially in the mental health area. And that was a big concern of ours too going forward with our mental behavior facility, they call it. But then able to have that flexibility to move those funds around and put it into areas where we think it really serves the county best. That was the reason that we gave it a positive consideration going forward.
Thank you. So, that background's helpful.
And we honestly, we didn't know what strings were going to be attached, John, and, and there's still some strings attached. And it still could be something that comes back later that can bite us in some areas. But I think that's the chance we take with any grant, we would go after anyway, is that can come back and bite you later. In this, at least, at least we have the ability to opt out at this point. And I think as long as that ability is there, where we can reasonably discuss that, hey, this works, this doesn't work, what works, and then negotiate those areas, as long as they'll continue to negotiate with us, I think we're good. But again, because of our involvement at the state level and in the county now, I think we'll see a lot of that prior to that being handed down to all the counties because Johnson County is so engaged at the state level now with the legislators. So I think, I think we're in a good seat right now. I don't think we were in that seat a year ago or whatever it's been, since we started on two years, probably, we've been hearing about this. But I think we're in a lot better position too as a county because of our, our regional abilities and our, the ability that we have to be involved at the state level. So I think it's the right time, where I think before maybe wasn't the right time, not for me anyway, but I think we're there.
Coming off of the ARPA funding, I think we were all, all of us, I think everyone here was involved, and I think we were all a little timid about taking something for what we saw as nothing, so.
Well, I think that change is hard, and it was probably very thoughtful to sit back and wait a year and see what happened or what happened in other counties to see if it was successful or non-successful. But I do agree that it's interesting that the counties that are in most need get the least amount of money. But I do also sometimes think that if you don't have the staff or the people or the subject matter experts in those areas, it's going to be very hard to implement that policy and that change. So sometimes it takes the bigger counties who get a little bit more money to then be able to supplement these smaller counties who don't get as much.
And I think we'll be the leader in that, I don't think that's happening really tremendously at this time.
It doesn't seem to be a lot of that, but I have been approached a couple of times now, I, over the year, about would we partner? And I'm like, possibly, we'll, we'll be back in touch. So I know that, that they're interested in doing so. Never did I think in a year we would pick up Shelby County Wick and now opening a second branch. But when you do it right, I guess people want to, want to play with you.
That's the point, when we do it right, and Johnson County is leading, we're going to continue to lead, and I think we're doing very well in that area right now.
With all of us being together, I know another topic, and the answer's not given, then that's fine. But we last met as a group about ARPA funds. Do we have remaining ARPA funds that are unallocated yet?
We do have some, I think we're kind of waiting on some of our bigger projects to get a little further down, know kind of what we're going to have left over. We do probably need to meet in the next month or two. We should have a better idea of what's left, and then we can look to see, you know, whatever is left, some of that projects, whatever we can wrap up. Because they'll need to be allocated by the end of this year, otherwise we're back to.
Well, that's the reason I would point it out, that we probably need to have a meeting late this summer after everything's.
And I, I think that's something, we're probably 30 days before we'll know on some of these projects. I think that's probably safe to say 30 to 45, we're on, on where we'll be at the coroner's office and health department.
Our budget, our furniture budget came in under.
We need to understand too, a lot of that was coroner equipment and things like that, that was unavoidable. So I think, we weren't being extravagant, we were just, there was a lot of complicated furniture.
We also didn't realize that those beautiful windows didn't allot for some of the furniture that we picked out, so we kind of punch out with that regard, so.
Those beautiful windows, I get it.
Thank you, Betsy, for your presentation, well done and well presented.
Thank you.
And all those involved, I appreciate it.
Like I said, it has not been just me, it has been all of my, all of my people, and they have done a fantastic job.
But we don't want to give Dr. Qualls any credit though, right? We love you, doctor, we really do.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I think at this point, this would be a commissioner vote. And I know this probably sounds terrible to some people, but I really, I really hesitate to do this vote without Commissioner Walls here. Because he's also been so engaged, I don't think there's an issue, I don't think he would have an issue with us voting. But Commissioner Walls, what's your thought on that?
And I, and I agree with that, I'd like for him to be here so that you got a unanimous vote on this. And at this point in time, that, that does seem to be the position of all three commissioners to go ahead and opt in. But I would like for him to be here to do that. The timing is such that we can do that in our next meeting this month without any problem. We'll put that on the agenda to get it done then.
Just has to be done by June first, so.
Make that announcement well in advance, so everybody will be aware of our intention. I would like for the, for Commissioner Walls to be here. We don't know the nature of his.
We don't know.
But he's awful sick.
He hasn't responded to me, yeah, and he hasn't responded to a text asking if he's okay or what's going on, so.
I think overall, it's, it's going to work quite well. And I think what you're going to see out of this is the regionalization in the next go around where the state's involved. They're going to, they're going to have more awareness of the need in the smaller and less healthy counties and being able to do a cooperative effort with the larger counties to supply them some of the personnel and other needs that they might, might be in want for. And then on the sustainability of funding, I think for sure you're going to see something in the third year in 2026 because the state is going to need a little bit of time to evaluate the effectiveness of what has transpired in the first two years of this program. And to just cut it off, it just all of a sudden, and, and so many good programs that may have been initiated or formed or innovative, whatever. So I, I think you're going to see funding at least in 2026. And through that period of time, they'll be able to evaluate the effectiveness and come up with whatever they want to do going forward.
Brian, do you think that perhaps the ready template of what went on in Ready might be a way that they would do a regional? What do you, what do you think?
I don't know, and it, it's so, I guess, confusing right now to, you know, what direction they want to go, how they think that direction should be taken. And I think we'll know a lot more, like I said, through the summer sessions when we're meeting with legislators and trying to figure out what, where their thoughts are and what we're doing. I will tell you this, the ICC and I know the AIC both are going to be very, very involved in this, it's, it's a priority. So I think we'll, we'll have a lot of answers coming back.
Do you think that the ready format is a potential, or?
Probably not, no.
No, because the ready format was too shotgun. I mean, it was very sporadic in the choice of the participants. I, I think the health funding going forward and what we would try to accomplish there has got to be more proximity driven. In other words, you wouldn't want Johnson County trying to do something with Crawford County or Bigle County or something. It's got to be Brown County, Shelby County, something where from a proximity standpoint, we're able to provide the needs that they might have and not have a.
Not as broad as ready.
Yeah, not as broad. So when I say regionalization, I'm not talking about eight or 10 counties. I'm talking about, as an example, Hamilton County, with their resources, they could easily assess two or three adjacent counties. At least that's my concept now.
Yeah, and I agree, it's like Washington County has about the same population as Edinburgh, our smallest town. So the state by just going by name of county and appropriating these funds, and I don't know if they're even lumping AVs into it or whatever, which is a mistake I think also, but I don't know what the formula is, but Ron has hit the nail right on the head. They need to look at five counties like Washington County that are in proximity to each other and do their work there. I don't think we're, we're in need of being a regional county for all of those counties around us, it just doesn't work.
Well, and I think that the distribution of the funds that, through the state should be based on how those funds have been used. I mean, they've got 2024 to look at, they'll have 2025 to look at, and those counties that are participating and helping other counties. And I hear this all the time from the smaller, I get thanked by the smaller counties all the time for not opting in that first year because they got some of that money that we didn't use that they drastically needed. So in a, in a way, we kind of helped them to start with, and then now we can help them in a positive way with, with going in and getting involved with this. And I think we just need to push that. And I think you'll see that done, I think you'll, I know, you know I'm going to be pushing that we start using these funds regionally and they start looking at it that way. And I think that's going to be a big plus, of course, is that involvement. I don't know what the answer is yet, but do, do we need to move to table the?
You can just do, yeah, just motion to table it and we'll take it up on the committee.
Move to table.
I'll second that.
May, what's the date on that next one?
May 13th.
No, 20th. May 20th meeting.
Yeah, that's your, your meeting.
Yeah, sorry.
May 20th. So I moved the table to opting in to the Health Fund Indiana program until our May 20th commissioners' meeting.
I'll second that, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries.
I'll move to adjourn, unless somebody's got something else they want to add.
Well, thank you for, thank you for inviting the council.
Anyway, I'll second our adjournment, and that means we're adjourned.
We're going to hang around.
I'm open for a motion. Open for a motion to adjourn on the council side?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Thank you all.